I'd like to call the meeting to order. And if you could please take a moment of silence. Please rise for the flagpole.
The flag is in the light of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, in whose cause all the religion and justice are.
In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, a public notice of this meeting has been sent to board members, all district schools, the Herald News, the Spur and Trends, The Record, The Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, the County Superintendent's Office, the Board Attorney, Cablevision of Warwick, and West Milford TV 77. And posted in the Administration Building, copies of the Board Meeting Calendar Resolution were provided to all local media, town hall, township library, and all district schools. Roll call, please, Mrs. Francis.
This is Romeo.
Here.
This is Stevenson.
Here.
Mr. Conklin.
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Here.
Mr. Carino.
Here.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Here.
This is Lockwood.
Here.
Mr. Stillman.
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Here.
Dr. Anamon, do you have a report?
Thank you very much. Good evening and welcome to our July meeting. Starting right off, we do have a new Eagle Scout candidate with us here tonight. Anthony DeFeetie is here. His presentation should be on here in front of the board members. Anthony, if you want to come up and briefly explain your project, what it will accomplish, and how to get it done, and how it will help our community.
Hello, my name is Anthony DeFeetie. I'm in 244, and I'm a life scout for the troop. I'm looking to start my Eagle project in the fall. It's going to be renovating the pavilion up at the turf. A family friend of mine, he was building it, he built it without any gutters or benches in it, so I went to add on to his project. I'll wait to put benches and then put gutters to drainage. If you look in the back of the book, it shows all the water and mud that was causing issues. People wouldn't like to sit in there. And then also, the second to last page is 3D print of it. This is the look of what I would like to do. It's the rain gutters coming down. I could do a nice spout coming down. That would be helpful with the West Milford Building Department. They would have to dig out at least six inches underneath, so I could put a tube. Then also, the benches would just create entertainment, which would be nice for people to actually sit when there's bad weather. And then throughout the whole pamphlet, it's just the project description and the benefits. I feel like it would benefit the family and friends of West Milford, and I would also decorate it to improve warm living space for others. During the project, I would have to give a lot of leadership skills. Materials will be a cost, so I'd have to do a GoFundMe or anything to raise that money. I would also need tools and other needs, possibly the excavator if I deal with drainage underneath. The costs, like I said before, will be funded by the whole town, by GoFundMe and all those. I will also do a safety hazard list before I actually do the project, because I feel like it would just give a lot of descriptions and all that to people. I also gave a list for the safety issues page of all the clothes and equipment that are needed for when people start helping me with the project. And, yeah.
Very thorough, great job.
Thank you, Anthony. We're looking forward to seeing the finished project. I'll give you a call probably Wednesday or Thursday this week.
Okay, thank you.
Next up, we have our special group here this evening, as you can see, wearing their colored yellow gold shirts, led by their coach, Mrs. Clay. This is the Special Olympics USA Games, this was a event held early this spring, I think early June, and we did wonderfully on it. So, Mrs., Dr. McQuaid is going to make a brief little presentation, and we do have a couple of certificates for some of our athletes.
Yes, we're just going to transition real quick just to the screen behind you. So while that's loading up, the Special Olympics USA Games are pretty special. If you see from the slide, there's about 5,500 athletes and coaches from all over 50 states. The Caribbean is there, there's 20,000 volunteers that come together for this event, 125,000 spectators. It's on ESPN, it's a very large event. So this is definitely high recognition for the athletes that qualify to be able to compete at this level, across other athletes across the nation, and it's a very, very competitive arena to be able to compete. So we are, as a Board of Education and Administration, we are super, super proud to recognize two individuals who are joining us tonight, and we appreciate that so very much. We have Michael McCloskey, who is a gold medalist, who I see wearing his medal tonight. And we also have a bronze medalist who graduated from our very own West Milford High School and has presented to us on several times here, and we're very proud of you, Destiny, in the bronze, and that's Destiny Garrity. We are going to recognize you both separately, but I just wanted to give just brief clips just to be able to show everybody. And this is Destiny Garrity is singing on this. This is a commercial that is nationally, some of you may have seen this commercial, you may not have known it's Destiny, but it is her voice, and you'll get to see her appearance in here as well. So just take a couple seconds and watch this.
There are more than 200 million people with intellectual disabilities. Help them shine for all they can do. Support the Special Olympics USA Games by grabbing a Jersey Mike's off on Wednesday, March 30th, and 100% of sales will be donated.
So for Destiny, we, as you can see here, and Coach Clay's quote, oh, sorry. I tried to get Coach Clay's quote correct, or she might, she might get me on that. So she was able to shine both on and off the track. So Destiny, what comes to mind when we think of you is everything that you've accomplished, both on the track as an athlete, but also obviously to the level of being in commercials, singing, and just have always pushing yourself to do, you know, better and bigger things. So you can see she was featured in the Jersey Mike's commercial, she also was selected as the closing act, she was the only one, and that video is incredible too, which some of you may have seen, her singing amongst all those 125,000 people, very incredible, this little light of mine. Bronze medalist, you can see, fifth in the 1500 meter fastest division, competed in the relay at that USA level, second time on Team New Jersey, and current Special Olympics captain. So we're very, very proud of you, so Dr. Anamon's going to present you with a certificate. Usually, Mr. Winston, Mr. Novak does the pictures, and I don't know if I can do the pictures. I would, whatever, take a picture. Multitasking, would you mind?
No.
Thank you. Thank you so much. The other athlete who we are recognizing tonight is Michael McCloskey, and Michael, the quote that, you know, he selected for you is "Every champion was once a contender that refused to give up," and when you watched the video of you from ESPN, you definitely did not give up, you were a champion. So we are going to be, you know, looking at that too. The other thing I just want to say about you is, I think your character says a lot about you, so in that picture, you can see then the athlete that he beat and getting the gold, he's meeting with him right after, cheering him on, which I think says a lot about our program, the character, and the students that we have here. So that says a lot about you, Michael. You are a gold medalist in 1500 meter fastest division, you competed at the USA Games in the turbo javelin and the 400 relay, you're also a captain, which shows your leadership skills, you're on our high school track team currently, which we're very proud of you for, and I know Coach Clay wanted to also just recognize the work that Artie Jakes has done at the high school, coaching you along, along obviously with, with Coach Clay. So just congratulations. Before we then clap for you, I just want everybody to see the video, because if you haven't seen it, it's pretty incredible. That's going to be the next clip, right? The next clip. We want to give you a certificate as well, just recognizing your accomplishments. The fact that it's dark now, sorry, I don't know. It's dark in here. Okay, once the presentation's done, we'll stick a quick picture with the light on. So. Okay. Want to play again? Yes. I just wanted to say, and I want to recognize that a coach is someone that sees beyond your limits and guides you through the greatness, that's a Michael Jordan quote. I do want to say to Coach Clay a special thank you for all she does for the athletes of the entire community. I think everyone knows you're passionate, you're dedicated, you're determined to continue to make a difference in basically in every individual's life that you come across, and it was when I was trying to come up with a quote, because that's a Dr. McQuaid quote, I was trying to come up with what, you know, just the inclusivity that you've done for this community, and look how big you've grown the program, but I know that it comes from a place of heart. So we just want to say thank you to that, and you can tell from these pictures just the love that she has, I think, for being a coach. So just a thank you to you, I knew you would be here tonight. And the other thing which I know Coach Clay would want us to do is that although she's the head coach for Special Olympics, you can clearly see here, we have a lot of volunteers that help her and coach and, you know, spend time at overnights for the New Jersey Games, and I know that we just want to recognize, because although tonight we did make it about you, Michael, and Destiny, we want to recognize the coaches that have pushed our athletes along, along the way. And you can see there, which is really, we're proud of too, we now have unified coaches, because we're expanding the board though, we've been talking about this, they're supportive of it, which we also really appreciate. The West Milford Special Olympics, you make us proud, you could see everybody walking in with their medals, there's a lot of other students that are here with medals or not here with their medals, competing in the New Jersey Games, our local competitions, and we just want to recognize that we have a lot of athletes in West Milford that we're very, very proud of. I did provide the board with a list of everyone that received gold, silver, medal, you can see the list goes on as to all of the accomplishments that West Milford has, even as far as the young athletes. And I know we have a young athlete tonight too, so we appreciate all of our athletes. And just a final quote from Special Olympics, "Just let me win, but if I cannot win, let me degrade in the attempt," and that's part of the Special Olympics oath. So I just want to say, you know, to everybody at the board, Administration, and all our athletes and families, thank you for supporting Special Olympics, and thank you to our now-recognized ESPN, putting us on the map, both of you nationally, so thank you very much. Maybe Coach Clay, Destiny, and Michael, can we just get a picture with you and Dr. Anamon?
And you.
You're in black and gold. Me, my big mouth. All right, Bron, you want to be, you want to be smart back ahead. Winners, yes. Thank you guys for coming tonight, everybody. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, thank you Dr. McQuaid for that presentation, thank you again for our athletes, coaches, parents, friends, volunteers, helpers, we do appreciate it. And the last item on the superintendent's report this week is just a brief update on legislative advocacy. We've discussed this the past few board meetings, and I just want to update the board and the rest of the community. About a week and a half ago, myself, Ms. Francisco, Mr. Schultz, our Assistant VA, and some board members, Ms. Van Dyke, Ms. Dwyer, Ms. O'Brien, we went down to see Assemblyman Baranco, who was the newest Assemblyperson from our legislative district at his offices in Monmouth Township. So we discussed, amongst other things, the current funding formula for, say, tech, the current S2 funding formula for the district, amongst some other issues of joint interest. We don't have exactly a response or next steps, but we do feel as though we can make some progress. He's looking into it with some other people. As you may well have read in the paper, there's a massive state surplus this year, I guess you could say COVID money or whatever, so there's a lot of money yet to be spent, and there are some legislators who are interested in seeing that money sent back to school districts that were cut by the new funding formula. They have this money, and they don't know what to do with it. A reasonable compromise or a reasonable solution would be to send that money to the West Milfords, the Verdens, the Jeffersons, all the towns in this part of the state that have had crippling cuts in state aid. So, more to follow on that, I just want to send a brief update.
Doctor, thank you, Dr. Anamon. Mr. Novak's not here tonight, there's no report for that. Mrs. Fran. Dr. Anamon, do you have a report for, for Mr. Novak?
I do not, no.
Mrs. Francisco?
Yes, we have the minutes from the June 16th Board of Education meeting, the regular meeting in the second session.
And you need a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the following Board of Education meeting minutes, June 16, 2022, workshop regular meeting, June 16, 2022, second session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Under my report, I was just going to also say that we went to see Assemblyman Baranco. I feel like there really wasn't much discussion as far as PCTI, I think we can agree that that's not a fight that that gentleman will be picking up. But he did have some, he did have some interest in the money that is sitting, you know, the extra money that's sitting there from the ASR funds, that they're trying to find a way back to help the districts that lost a lot of money. Hopefully, they will be able to do something with it. As far as that, that's all I, that's the only report I have as far as the president's report tonight. Public comment. This portion of the meeting is open to members of the public for the purpose of addressing resolutions on this agenda only. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. Each speaker will be given five minutes for a period of 30 minutes, and then time permitting, other public comment limited to five minutes per speaker will be allowed until 30-minute time carry transpires. All members of the public speaking during this public comment period are asked to address topics listed in the agenda. All speakers are asked to sign the register, provide it, and give their full name, spell their last name, group affiliation if appropriate, and provide their address. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered, and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and respectful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged, and the board and the Administration will not respond to them. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded to them by the laws of New Jersey. The board is not responsible and is not liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in the light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible, liable for their comments. Anyone wishing to speak under public comment? Not? Oh, come on up.
Sorry, where does speak, does it say like, thank you?
Oh, go right ahead. We should have let you stand up before. Don't be nervous, we're happy to see you.
Hi, everyone, thank you all for coming out this evening, it really means a lot to us. This has been, top-down, the best year for me. I never thought in a million years that I would be a part of a worldwide commercial that would raise over $20 million, or be chosen to sing at the closing ceremonies in front of the whole United States. But there is a reason why I'm standing here right now tonight and telling my incredible journey, and that's because of my family and friends, and of course, WMSO, you guys are the reason why I do what I do, and I want to thank you for that. But I wanted to talk about Coach Clay, not only my coach, but she was my teacher and now mentor. And let me, and let me tell you guys, when I was in Maple Grove, she was hands down so tough on me. And I thought, okay, this lady's literally out to get me. But looking at it now as an adult, I see why she did that. Clay knew that I had something in me that I never thought I had, and I think that's why I make things happen today. I want to thank you for always pushing me to be my best, and I say this all the time to you, but you literally changed my life. You're the reason why I can do anything I put my mind to, and also the reason that I am, the reason why I am the confident woman I am today. And the last thing I wanted to say is how lucky I am that I get to be a part of a community that has so much kindness and inclusion, and I think we should continue to do that so we can change the world one step at a time. I don't know what's next for me, but I hope I continue to make West Milford proud. Thank you and I appreciate it.
Destiny, can you frame that and give that part of it to that surprise?
I don't have to, you know, print my name.
No, we know you. We'll make our parents do that.
No, no, he can do it himself.
Exactly. First, I would love to thank Dr. Anamon and Dr. McQuaid for the lovely presentation that took place tonight, Mr. Novak, who isn't here, and the rest of the members of the board for this award tonight. I would also like to thank the teachers and coaches who have supported us during this journey. These medals are not only for us, but also for our town. I've been a part of Special Olympics for nine years, and those nine years are years I would never change. Those nine years of hard work and dedication built confidence in me to try other sports at a level I never thought I could reach, like varsity bowling and varsity skiing. Being in high school cross-country with some of the best teammates and coaches that I could ever ask for. Nine years of making lots of new friends all over the state of New Jersey, and it gave me the adrenaline I needed to rise up. Wait, hold on. I'm going to start that over. Nine years of making lots of new friends all over the state of New Jersey and gave me adrenaline I needed to rise up to the top of New York. Living my dream and capturing the gold in the 1500 meter race. I want to thank all my coaches from Team New Jersey and in high school who helped me train, but especially Coach Clay, who pushed me more than anyone else during these nine years. I promised her I would bring home gold, and here I am today as one of her new team captains of West Milford Special Olympics. Thank you again, and hopefully the next place my mom and dad will be screaming at the top of their name, at the top of their lungs. It's Berlin, Germany, and I will be representing you guys in red, white, and blue.
Destiny and Michael, you make us West Milford proud, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Great, so we're going to be talking a little bit about the dress code.
Could you, could you just give us your names?
Rebecca Benowitz, B-E-N-O-W-I-T-Z.
You can sign all that when you're done, have that, but just let us know your name, so I do have to.
I'm Mia Grisudi.
I'm Michael Jordan. So we were told that you guys made some revisions to our written-down dress code based on what we as a student class have done, and I was just wondering, we could hear those revisions, so we can react to them a little bit.
They're, they're in the policy code that we're about to print tonight, approve tonight. We can get you a copy of it, it's just the first reading, if you'd like. Do you have a copy?
I don't have a copy here, we usually post it on our website.
Okay.
I'll make sure it's on first item. It isn't there already.
If you want to give, you know, you have a copy? It is the first reading. The second reading will be in August, so if there's something in there that you want to make a comment on, you will be able to come before us, again, before them, to discuss it if you'd like. If you have other issues as far as that, you could always reach out to Dr. Anamon.
Okay, great, and the second reading that's happening in August, is that you'll want to finalize and then print?
Yes, yes.
Great, so we'll look over this and we'll get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Now, you're, did you get their names for us? We're fine.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
Before the end of the meeting, if you could just come up and just sign that, okay, so that we know who was here. Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, I'd like to make motion to close public comments. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, just want to make one edit to the agenda before we adopt the agenda. It'll be on page six. Personnel, Student Affairs, Resolution Number 14. In the middle line where it says at the per diem rate of 200, if you can strike that through, it should say, "Agree." At the annual salary of $56,800, and then parentheses, and it's going to say BA/2, it's BA Step 2.
Oh, number 14?
14.
Anything else on the agenda? I need a motion to adopt the agenda presented. Make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented as well, second chance. Any a second?
Second.
Can I ask for the revision one more time? I'm really sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, it's okay.
I'll just say.
BA Step 2, I got that, I just lost the numbers.
56,800.
Thank you.
Sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Education, Mrs. Dwyer.
Yes, I'd like to move items 1 through 6 to approval.
Second. Any discussion? If not...
Yes.
Mr. Greenow?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mr. Greenow?
Personnel, Student Affairs.
So for Personnel, Student Affairs, I'd like to move items 1 through 28, which does include hand carry number 1.
Second. Any roll call? Any discussion? If not, roll call. Mr. Greenow?
Abstained on 21, and then yes to all.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
No on the hand carry number 1 and yes to everything else.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Abstained on 21 and yes on everything else.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Operations and Finance, Mr. Stillman.
I'd like to move 1 through 13.
Second. Discussion? If not, roll call. Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Abstained on 21 and yes on everything else.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Operations and Finance, Mr. Stillman.
I'd like to move 1 through 13.
Second. Discussion? If not, roll call. Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Greenow?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Let's move 14. Second. Discussion?
I already said 12.
Yeah, but Board has to approve everyone else's.
Just make a change right in the second quarter.
It's a group break.
I just wanted to make sure. I didn't want you to expect me there. I'll be teaching today.
Well, maybe you can skip.
Not a personal, sorry.
If not, then roll call. Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
You have to abstain for yourself, okay? Yeah, we should have been clear. You abstain for yourself, and then you can vote for the rest.
Oh, oh.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Abstained for myself, yes for everyone else.
Mr. Greenow?
Abstained for myself, no for Stevenson and a yes for everyone else.
Would you like to include that?
Please, sure.
Mr. Greenow? Mrs. Lockwood?
Abstained for myself and yes for everyone else.
Mrs. O'Brien?
I don't know what to do.
Hey, I'm your neighbor.
Abstained for myself, yes to everyone else. Mrs. Romeo?
Abstained, repeat Romeo, yes to everyone else.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Abstained for myself and no for Rick Greenow and yes for everybody else.
Mr. Stillman?
Abstained for myself, yes for everyone else.
Mrs. O'Brien?
I don't know what to do.
Hey, I'm your neighbor.
Abstained for myself, yes to everyone else. Mrs. Romeo?
Abstained, repeat Romeo, yes to everyone else.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Abstained for myself and no for Rick Greenow and yes for everybody else. You're shy.
Mr. Stillman?
I'm glad we're laughing.
Abstained for myself, yes for everyone else.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Abstained for myself, yes for everyone else.
That wouldn't have been funny if she said no to you.
I was thinking about saying no there. For a minute, I was going to say no for everybody else.
That would have been a moment.
I'd like to move number 15.
Second. Okay, any discussion? Roll call. Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Policy, Mrs.?
There's a.
Oh, 20. Oh, I'm sorry, but that.
No, it was the hand carry.
Okay, we're keeping that one for after executive session, is that?
We have to.
Okay, go ahead, Jeff.
I'd like to move number 22, which is why I want to hold it forward.
Or you, maybe you.
Move it and then we'll table it.
You're moving it? Okay, go ahead.
So I'd like to make a motion to hold that for executive session.
Second. Let's discuss last meeting.
Still hold it.
Okay, that's fine. So table it until after executive session.
Yes.
We need a roll call or just a voice vote?
Voice vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So we'll hold that until we come back from executive session. Policy?
I'd like to make a motion to move numbers 1 through 28 under policy.
Second. Any discussion?
I have.
Okay.
There is a HIP policy. I forget what number it is on here. But I would just like to request, because this Board has worked so hard in getting HIPS right, and Alex, I think that's really to your, kudos to you for really all the work that you've done with the Board and making the HIPS better. I'd like to request that that policy is in the September orientation for full teachers so that they're very clear on that policy and know that this Board has worked very hard and would like to continue to hold that policy in high esteem.
Any other discussions under the policy? Do you have something, Kate?
I do, yeah. If one of, even though this is a first reading, if one of these was voted no tonight, then it would go to a first reading in August possibly?
Well, wait a minute.
Go back to committee, I would think.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because if it was not approved, we'd have to make amendments.
Which it could go to committee anyway.
Could always go.
Before a second meeting.
Correct.
Okay, because I do, I am curious what the students would like to add or what they, their opinion on the dress coding and, it's actually called Dress and Grooming Policy. I'm a real believer that in, you know, if our students can help to shape what it is that affects their lives every single day, and it matters to them, then they'd be more likely to follow it. And I know that, you know, dress codes are an issue in local high schools. So I am excited to hear what the, you know, recommendations are from the student body. So I am just going to vote no on the public vote tonight for that reason, because I want to be sure that student input is brought into that.
Can we table it? And tell outside?
Yeah, okay, I wasn't sure. I wasn't sure what to do.
So you're clear? It is number 17. It is titled Dress Code. It is not Dress and Grooming. That is for staff and supports staff.
Thank you.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Yeah, I would have said that's what I wanted to bring to board.
We can table it, or it can go for the first reading, and we can talk about it, and that's what the first reading is for, is so that it kind of initiates that discussion from other places, other than the Board.
Okay.
But we can table it, we can do whatever you want, but.
The other thing to keep in mind, if I can just add, if the first reading is tonight, the second reading would be August, so that it could be implemented for September. I just don't want to hold it if.
Okay, that actually makes sense.
Right. Otherwise, we'll go August, September.
Correct. And after the first reading, we can make revisions and then have the second reading.
Okay.
That's the idea of it.
Then I will vote yes, and then the idea is then we'll look at it. I have one other thing also besides that, but I have two other things. One is, please, I was so thankful to get a packet today. I had a really hard time with the policies. They're being really unstable. So I am a mess in my policies. That's why, thank you for pointing out. It's number 12. I literally had this all over the living room floor, and I'm trying to figure out what goes with what, so.
We'll definitely.
I need.
We'll definitely staple it.
Thank you.
Without a staple.
It was a mess for me today. But the second one that I want to talk about is policy number 7410, called Maintenance and Repair. My first question is, is this new?
Number 24.
It's a number 25.
Yeah, that was part of the ones that came in the packet for all the mess.
Oh, it's 24.
I'll have to check in the top corner of the policy tape. I don't have it in front of me. It's going to say new or revised. I don't have it in front of me. Say it.
One has to do with work letters. It says new or revised, okay. Just because I'm excited if this is new and if this is old, either way, I'm excited to see this in the future. It says that a comprehensive maintenance plan means that a school district's multi-year maintenance plan covering required maintenance activities for each school facility in the school district. And it goes on to say that required maintenance activities include those outlined in the state code, and that the school facility shall report the activities in its annual comprehensive maintenance plan. So that's something that I'm just interested in seeing, like what our yearly plan is for the upcoming future.
We have a long-range facility plan.
Okay, so that's what this would be discussing? I was just wondering.
Yeah, the facilities maintenance plan, we have to have a long-range facility plan that's approved by the state of New Jersey. It has updates on a regular basis, and anytime we do a major project, it gets updated. We also have a comprehensive maintenance plan, which requires a maintenance program where we spend so much money every year on required maintenance so that we maintain the buildings properly. So that's been ongoing for about 15 years that I can remember, at least. It's not longer.
Great.
This policy was originally adopted in 2012, so this is a revision.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussions under policy? If not, roll call. Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Committee reports, I don't know how many committees are meeting. Mike, did you?
Yeah, I did have a little.
Boy, they really haven't had one.
Yeah, so.
Safety, we don't meet during the summer. Superintendent Randtable doesn't meet during the summer. State County School Boards doesn't meet during the summer. New Jersey School Boards, the only update would be that the information went out for workshop. Hopefully, everybody could go, even if they could go for one day, it would be wonderful because it's finally back to in person, and you get much more out of it if you're there in person. Legislative, Mrs. O'Brien?
Oh, there is somebody that met over the summer right now. It's on June 29th, the New Jersey Legislature held voting sessions that led the state financial year 2023 appropriations and various educational measures to the Governor's desk. Governor Murphy signed the Fiscal Year 23 Appropriations Act on Thursday, 2/30. The budget for the year that began July 1 provides a total of $18.60 billion to the New Jersey Department of Education, which is a 3% increase over last year. Two things I'd just like to highlight to the Board and to the community, that $30 million in stabilization designed to assist districts in implementing plans to adjust to their new funding levels under S-2 was part of this, as well as $420 million in extraordinary special education cost paid. In addition to the state budget, the Governor also signed the following measures into law. I've mentioned these over the last few meetings, but I'm just going to go through them real briefly. The New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment as a field test for the class of 2023 was signed in by the Governor on July 5. This requires the State Board of Education to administer the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Yes on everything, no on number 17. Mr. Guerino.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Yes. Committee reports. I don't know how many committees are meeting. Mike, did you?
Yeah, I did have a little.
Boy, they really haven't had one.
Yeah, so.
Safety, we don't meet during the summer. Superintendent Randtable doesn't meet during the summer. State county school boards doesn't meet during the summer. New Jersey school boards, the only update would be that the information went out for workshop. Hopefully, everybody could go, even if they could go for one day, it would be wonderful because it's finally back to in person and you get much more out of it if you're there in person. Legislative, Mrs. O'Brien.
Oh, there is somebody that met over the summer right now. It's on June 29th. The New Jersey Legislature held voting sessions that led the state financial year 2023 appropriations and various educational measures to the governor's desk. Governor Murphy signed the Fiscal Year 23 Appropriations Act on Thursday, 2/30. The budget for the year that began July 1st provides a total of $18.60 billion to the New Jersey Department of Education, which is a 3% increase over last year. Two things I'd just like to highlight to the board and to the community that $30 million in stabilization designed to assist districts in implementing plans to adjust to their new funding levels under S-2 was part of this, as well as $420 million in extraordinary special education costs paid. In addition to the state budget, the governor also signed the following measures into law. I've mentioned these over the last few meetings, but so I'm just going to go through them real briefly. The New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment as a field test for the class of 2023 was signed in by the governor on July 5th. This requires the State Board of Education to administer the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment as a field test, quotes, for the class of 2023. The goal of the legislation is to better understand the extent and severity of learning loss among its students and develop graduation assessments that are not only realistic and achievable, but appropriately rigorous. Both chambers of legislature have now approved this bill and is now waiting action by the governor, and that's the free school meal expansion, which they're expanding free breakfasts and lunches to students from working-class middle families. And if the governor signs it, the bill will go to effect September 1st, 2023. Eliminating EDTPA, which would prohibit the State Board of Education from requiring the completion of a Commissioner of Education-approved performance-based assessment as a requirement for teacher certification. It would remove this requirement for the attainment of a certificate of eligibility with advanced standing, a certificate of eligibility, or a standard certificate. Educator preparation programs would have the option to require their teacher candidates to complete a performance-based assessment approved by an educator preparation program. Two other things, publicized school meals. They want to implement a public education campaign that is designed to educate parents and guardians about the various school meal programs, options that are available to students with free reduced lunches. And school threat assessment team would require each school, district, and charter schools to develop a policy for the establishment of a threat assessment team at each school. The purpose of the team would be to help ensure a safe and secure school environment by assisting staff in identifying students who possess, pose a potential safety risk and prevent teams targeted violence in the district. Thank you. That was a lot, right?
Well, I got five pages, I'm to a page in it now, so.
I guess they're busy right before the summer, right before they vote on everything.
I hope August is quiet.
It probably will be. Thank you, Debbie. Technology?
We have not met yet. He's on vacation either conference.
Everything's moving ahead with the phone system.
I think the phone system and the website are the two big ticket items that we won. Hopefully, we flip them this weekend.
So hopefully, August will, our August meeting will proper there.
Yeah.
Have something going. Township and the joint committee.
We had a canceled meeting. The township council canceled the meeting, but it's rescheduled for August.
Yeah, I think it went out for the committee matters. The third is, it was for the fifth, and that's not going to work. Right, because the township administrator is going to be away. So we're actually looking toward the end of August, like the 19th, that Friday? Does that work for?
We were going to put out the 19th to them.
If it works for you, Ray, and for you, Terry, then we'll move forward.
Yeah, we have a technology committee meeting that morning. That's the problem. So maybe we could just put that at 10 o'clock if you have some time.
That's good. West Milford Municipal Alliance. Courtney, can you?
There have not been meetings for the month of July and August, but there is still a lot going on in the West Milford Municipal Alliance that we've been updated about via email. We want to thank the United, thanks to United for Prevention in the State County, the Board of Education has received smoke-free signs for our schools, school property, and for the West Milford Parks and Recreation. Also, in collaboration with United for Prevention in the State County and our Director of Education, Dan Novak, the program "We're Not Buying It" will be offered to our sixth-grade students in the 2022-2023 school year at no cost to the district or the alliance. The second National Night Out is on Tuesday, August 2nd, at Bubbling Springs. This nationwide event is to bring together law enforcement and the community. The alliance will have a table there and is free for everyone, and the alliance hopes to see everyone there.
Thank you. I recommend they go because last year, I think it was our first year, and it looked like it really had a good turnout. People are always looking for places to go, and that's a great night. Thank you. Special education, Mrs. Lockwood. Okay, old business. Anyone have anything under old business? Mr. Guerino?
So just wondering about update on the fill down. I think we're going to have to start work on July 1st. So they're working on it now. They stripped the infield down to the, however much clay they took out. Ordered 2 million pounds of infield mix, waiting on that to be delivered. And that's the next step, is to get that infield graded, get that lift removed from the infield to the outfield.
And are they just doing the infield this year?
Infield this year, outfield next year.
So then the field can be used in the fall? We're not doing anything on the outfield?
The outfield is being used by field hockey in the fall.
Right, baseball also. Baseball also plays there.
On the outfield?
Why couldn't the infield be used? They're just putting new clay down.
It's taken apart. The infield is completely.
They're not going to put new clay down?
Well, we have a delay in getting it.
I mean, now, but in the, like, the fall is September, right?
It depends on how fast they get done.
So it was ordered?
It's ordered.
It's been ordered, but I think there's a three or four week backlog.
So if it was ordered probably before July 1st.
Couple weeks ago, yeah.
It would probably go in sometime in August, right?
I think so.
Possibly.
So it could be used in the fall?
Possible.
I mean, because there'd be, there's going to be three or four teams that will have their comprised of seventh and eighth graders that it would be good for them to be able to play fall baseball there instead of playing away. The idea was they were going to play away because we thought there was going to be more work done.
Yeah, they're splitting up the infield one year, outfield next year.
Yeah. I think it'd be good to be able to play. Now, next year, it's a different story, right? Because you gotta, you gotta give the outfield some rest.
So next year, they're going to top dress, they're going to regrade and top dress the outfield. So that's going to be a process over eight, 10 weeks, maybe. They're going to add, keep adding to it to the top so a lot of time to get, build it up a little bit. So I don't know that you can be able to play on that for a while there.
I would think summer couldn't play in the fall.
Probably not next year.
So it'd be good to know, it'd be good that they'll be able to do it this year, then they can know to prepare. Like, this is a year in advance, we can know to prepare.
Yeah, well, we had similar conversations last year. We gave everybody a year to prepare, and we're just breaking it up into two manageable chunks, maybe, rather than two little ones.
And this is all, they're asking all these questions because it's all good news. Because I don't know if people know, but the 12-year-old, West Milford 12-year-olds, they won the District 2 championship, which basically comprises most of state county teams. And they play tomorrow in Sparta for the sectional final. So should they be successful, then they will play in the state tournament. And, you know, that hasn't happened in quite some time for our West Milford baseball program. So that's exciting. And the thing that's even more exciting is the state tournament this year is going to be played in Quanik. So it's, like, we should be able to get some big crowds should we be successful in winning tomorrow. Or if we lose tomorrow, the next game. Exciting for.
Is it double elimination?
Exciting for those 12-year-old boys. It is, baseball is double.
Double.
So, and, you know, they've won all through, so they've got a game. They want to win tomorrow.
Big following on Facebook, I bet. So it's great. It's always wonderful when we see our kids doing well like that.
And these are, again, these are 12-year-olds, so six, eight years, they're going to be the ones, they're going to be the juniors and seniors and play in Dorset baseball. Be great to see that field become a premier baseball camp again.
Well, it's also connected to sports, not really, but we are finally paving the gravel lot that's adjacent to Mappapin, just off of Cormick and Diaglos Field. So we are picking up some spots there, making it a lot more convenient. We've always had a hodgepodge of people parked sideways, diagonal ways, in which way you could imagine. So we're finally, we've been looking at that for years, and we're probably getting it done now. So it's be graded as we speak, and it should be paved very shortly, so.
I do feel like this is, this is my watch to Greg Bailey. I figure I'd come with full West Milford.
If you fall asleep, you're in trouble. Jay, he wore a hat. He usually took his hat.
I have a couple of things. While we're on that parking lot, who's doing the paving on that parking lot? How did we get that contract? Is that out to bid or?
It's a state contract.
It goes through the cooperative. We don't go out to, I believe it's Murray Paving. They've done other paving projects for us.
I was just wondering why something like that wouldn't send out the bid knowing that we have a lot of paving contractors in West Milford. That would probably, you know, wouldn't mind doing it a little bit or something. There's about seven or eight of them, right?
In order to go out to bid, you would need to have the engineer draw up the specifications, and it would be a lot more costly.
So who designing the pill and cuts that they did now?
It goes through the cooperative. So the, you basically give them the size of, where they come out and measure out the size of what needs to be paved, and then they give you a price based upon what was approved by the cooperative.
Right, but what I'm saying is there was materials brought in for each parking lot. So pitch to a certain spot. Who designed that? We would have to get it engineered. Who engineered it for them? Because there was all stakes and string.
I don't think, I know that they had to take out some of the rock that was already there.
Yeah, there was triax that was the stuff brought in. I was up there last two days, dropped it off watching. I was just curious why we didn't send something like that out to bid knowing we have a lot of paving contractors in West Milford.
We use the cooperative.
Okay, let Terry, then I'll come back to you because.
This is on?
It's on, okay, go ahead.
So in the past, when we did paving, we had Haskell paving.
They were a subcontractor.
I was going to say, were they at the state?
They were a subcontractor for the Murray Paving, who is on the cooperative. Use Haskell paving as a subcontractor. Because they can also, if they have a lot of work, they can subcontract, you know?
I just have a concern. Fourth of July, we met for fireworks and enjoyed them. And there's the area that walkway between the high school and the senior parking lot. That is a mess, and I think it's very dangerous. And I was wondering if we could do something there. It's a very small piece, but I'm afraid that a kid is going to get hurt.
It has barriers, and there are now, doesn't it?
Some parts of it do, some parts of it don't. It's a disaster.
We can look into it. We've talked about it in the past, so.
Okay, thank you. Jay, and then I'll come back to you, Courtney.
So while I'm going back to the maintenance of the school and stuff, you know, like I said, driving around. I mean, we did the Marshall Hill fence. That was on the rec advisory when that happened. But we didn't finish the rest of it. The rest of it is jagged, rusted, you need a technician to go and pass the gate.
I'm sorry.
It's not just that. I mean, the backboards of the basketball, we put brand-new nets on these old rusted-up backboards behind the high school. But we have elementary schools that have brand-new backboards, so I know we can get them because they're the same backboards. I mean, there's a big pornographic thing painted on two walls over two times at Hillcrest. I mean, that's still building of ours of the old. That stuff needs to be cleaned up and taken care of.
It was a basketball court behind the high school, but it's all.
There's four basketball hoops back there, back, and they're all rusted, but we put brand-new nets on them. Fast break is using them right now.
We could definitely get new backboards.
Well, I mean, just even if we painted them before, we had a bunch of kids going out there. You know, take a little pride in the stuff that we have. If we don't pay pride in it, the kids playing on it, they're on the market.
Yeah, but you said something about at Hillcrest.
Hillcrest has two big tall brothers painted on the side.
For female models.
Side of the building.
The side of the back, yeah. I can see it.
Oh, yeah? That's something they could easily do best. I would hope they have cleaner for that. Courtney, you have something?
Yes, Terry reminded me, we had brought up and talked before, in old business once before too, about the crosswalk from the senior parking lot to Mappapin and how that's a little bit of a safety issue too, because it goes, it's like on a slant and goes behind. If it were just straight and just at the shortest part from like the flat pole, I think it would be a lot safer than going diagonal. It's just something else that I think adds to your list to look at if we're making the list because it's dangerous. We've talked about it before.
Anything else under old business? If not? Make a motion for those business second. All those in favor?
Aye.
New business? Anything? Okay.
We have that big field up behind tennis courts, I believe, and the track. I drove up there. That's just dumping grounds. Is there anything that we can do with that up there? I mean, if we made that parking and a four-eight sack accessible to track, then it gives you more parking. Because you got a lot of, you know, other than the new parking lot that's repaid and that one, the Steve Creek, there's no other parking for any one of them three fields.
Isn't the handicap, maybe I'm wrong because I don't go up there.
You got a couple of slots up top, but it's all for officials.
It's really not enough. That's for officials?
Officials and handicapped.
Doesn't official not park inside the field? Like, isn't there, there used to be like an area.
Because once you go to that last little bump, there's official parking and handicap parking. We don't allow general public parking on that junky.
Yeah. So how many?
But up where they used to set up fireworks up there, we got, that's a big, it's just overgrown. We're using it as a dumping ground.
Is that where the concrete is from the old projects?
Yep, piles of clay, piles of dirt, all kinds of.
Where is it? Just behind the tennis courts, like up that little?
Up if you go up behind.
With the BMX? Oh, wow, okay, I'm sorry. I couldn't figure out where you were talking about that there's.
Someone explain the dumping?
Well, you don't mean it's dumping. You mean they're putting like old.
Whatever you said from old projects.
Projects from us, yes, any project we've done or contracted.
That happened like in the early 2000s, that stuff has been up there since.
There's fresh piles of stuff up there now.
Fresh?
Fresh piles dumped up there now.
Maybe Chris needs to look it up. I know that we talked about that many, many years ago about doing something up there, but I think it's the, isn't that why the, even the BMX people had some questions about that area?
Those BMX people wanted to use it, but we never got back to them.
No, they never got back to us. We did follow up with the BMX people, right?
It's true.
Yeah, that was, they were looking to raise money, I believe, the BMX people. But anyhow, wasn't there a relationship with the rock?
Did the BMX people email you?
About recently?
No, no, the very last correspondence with the BMX people.
About two, maybe up to three years ago.
They have a name too. They presented to us. It's a family that does back you. So would you be able to reach out to them for the board and see if they're still interested? If it's something, have we finished that conversation and they said they're no longer interested or?
They were looking for funding, I thought was the last conversation. That was, they were supposed to get back to us.
Part of the issue was they wanted a long-term lease on the property, and it becomes problematic with, we have a problem. We just can't lease it out to one individual without offering it out there.
You have to do it.
So it comes problematic.
I'm just saying, if we can maintain it, if we can keep it clean. If you drive up there, if I was a landscaper, drove up there and saw it, I would dump my stuff there because we can't think of what.
The gate wasn't locked?
Nope. Here's the first pile up there, torque.
Show me a picture of it.
Torque, it's got, it's covered.
Oh, my goodness.
Just like the pile up here, this parking lot down here, that's far, big power.
That might be some of the clay that they took out.
From Hill Galley.
They are doing air-moving dump shots back and forth.
It might be the old clay that just scraped down Hill Galley, took it down a couple inches. We'll take a spin up there.
I didn't even know you could drive back there? Huh? I didn't even know you could drive back there, to be honest with you. I thought that there was a gate there, a chain that you can't get through.
It's unlocked.
Yeah, it didn't elaborate. Probably not a good idea to be unlocked. Any other, oh, new business, around new business? If not, you need a motion? Motion to oppose new business second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public comment? This portion of the meeting is open to members of the public having a legitimate interest in the actions of the board for the purpose of addressing any subject matter pertinent to and/or directly relating to the operation of the West Milford Public Schools District. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. Each speaker will be given five minutes for a period of 30 minutes, then time for admitting other public comment, limited to five minutes per speaker, will be allowed until the 30-minute time period transpires. All members are asked, sign the register provided and give their full name, spell their last name, group affiliation if appropriate, and provide their address. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered, and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and respect the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged, and the board and the administration will not respond to them. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded to them by the laws of New Jersey. The board is not responsible and is not liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Anyone wishing to speak under public comment, come on up, please. And you can sign when you're up there.
Gotcha. Do you want our names again?
Yeah, your names are there, right?
Okay, so we did go over what you gave us. To start, I would just like to thank everybody for being so open and cooperative is the wrong word, but like, just accepted of everything that we've been trying to do through the long road. So everything seems to be pretty much perfect. It's exactly word for word what we've given you as a student body about what we would like to see in the high school and especially in the middle school. So again, just thank you. It's really nice to see all of our hard work is coming to like this big finale, and it's really, really going to pay off.
We're glad to see that you put the work in, and we're all, that's what we're here for, is to hear from you and get your input. As a board, we took it and listened. Mrs. Stevenson brought it to our policy, and we were very open to hearing about what you had.
Thank you.
Thanks.
On behalf of the Women's Equality and Empowerment Club, which is newly founded this year, and again, we thank you, we just had a couple of like comments and questions about specifically the last two points after the actual dress code. So the ones about detention and the district code of conduct. So our first point, like our first, like something we discussed together as a club was that dress code would be handled in like more of a discreet manner and less as like a straight-up discipline thing, because we saw that like if this dress code was implemented, then it would be a bigger issue than like a late or something like that, because clearly something's lacking in the student side. Or, for example, number seven, they're promoting some type of hate speech, sexual harassment, all that type of stuff. So we were wondering if, because many students have addressed and brought to us that they've been pulled up in like the front of the classroom and called out on these things, on like their dress code and the dress violations. So we were just wondering if it could be addressed in a discreet manner and redirected to like a guidance counselor or case manager in addition to maybe like some type of action, like speaking with the teacher and that type of thing. So we just had a comment about that. And then our other comment was about the last point. We just want a clarification about the part that says, any number that makes other students uncomfortable are encouraged to participate in counseling regarding the nature of their actions. Because we understand that obviously number seven, if students are in violation of number seven, they should be encouraged to have some discussion. But we're just wondering like where the students input would fall in that point. We're just wondering, like where the students' input would fall in that point.
So the reason we did that is we said we were thinking about the teachers. And we were thinking that teachers might be uncomfortable with some of the dress code for our student. And that's where that came from, that it wasn't just a T-shirt that had religious or hate speech. It could be something else that might make a teacher uncomfortable.
Oh, okay. So that's related to number seven? That makes a lot, okay, that makes sense.
Or any of it.
Or any of it.
Any of it.
All right. Just on that point, really quick, if it's making a teacher uncomfortable, if a student is in violation of any of the points of the dress code, that's a separate issue. They are fully in violation of another point. I just don't, I just need a little bit more clarification on if a teacher's uncomfortable, that kind of encourages, is the wrong word, but it's the only one I can think of at the moment, encourages the, like a teacher feeling like they can look at a student's body in a way that would make them feel uncomfortable. If a student is in violation of one of the other points besides the racial and hate speech and all that, again, it's against the dress code, so it's a thing. If a teacher feels uncomfortable, I really feel like that's a personal issue, for lack of a better phrase. Teachers should not be looking at students in that way.
I think it was just clarification for the teachers. But I understand your point, that if it's they're violating the dress code, they're violating the dress code. So we'll take it back to policy and committee and discuss it further.
Okay, great. Thank you, thank you so much. Just one more thing, sorry. We wanted to add to it that dress code violations are addressed by the end of second period. As a whole, we've had students come up to us and tell us that they were dress coded multiple times in one day by different teachers, at different periods throughout the day. Like, for example, a student will get dress coded maybe in first or second period. Originally, they would go down to Mr. Flair's office or Mr. Strian's, and they would send them back to class, you're fine, whatever. And then later in the day, usually sixth or seventh period, maybe even eighth, another teacher would comment and dress code them. By that point in the day, if another teacher hasn't already dress coded them or sees an issue in their clothing, I feel as though addressing it so late in the day is kind of a loose point. Can't really do much by then if somebody else hasn't already seen an issue in it. So I was just wondering.
That could be added to the discussion, many.
Okay. And I think we, I think that was it that we had. I just wanted to ask if anybody else had any like questions for us regarding any of these points? We've been working on it for a long time, so I just want to make sure these like students there have any to ask questions?
Sure, go ahead, thank you. All right. So I go to school, and I'm wearing something inappropriate. Okay. First period, they, what's the expression? Okay. Then they sent, and then I would end up going to Mr. Polero's office or something? What happens? Walk me through the steps. What happens when you go to the office? And like, do they ask you, like, is there a, if it's a shirt, maybe you wear a different shirt, do you get, do you have to call home and have another outfit?
Turn it inside out.
And what do you, what's, is there...
For me personally, I was asked to go put on a gym shirt or a sweatshirt, and if I didn't have one, then they would get one for me or something like that, or I would just have a detention.
Okay. Is that, is that the usual process?
Yeah. Unless it was like a hate crime shirt or something that was extremely offensive, then it would be kind of a bigger problem.
In what way?
I personally wasn't wearing like anything.
No, no, I'm saying, but if I was wearing, if I was wearing a shirt in that caliber, okay, of course I would assume they would make me want to change that shirt, correct?
Yes, of course.
What's, what's the other, so what's the...
I'm sure they would call a parent probably and ask to bring another shirt or get changed for gym shirts. Part of the reason that we added so much about that specific point in our revised dress code was that there wasn't much about it in our current dress code. So again, none of us have ever had that issue that we have to be addressed about it, but there just wasn't much about it, so I don't know if any, if too much was done besides that, can you put on a sweatshirt? Can you turn down?
Now, here's the reason why I ask this, and I'm not, I'm not out to ban ban the proverbial hot seat, okay? You had just said to us that if you were, if you were, if you had a teacher...
Dress code.
Code you. Sounds like brainiac. A teacher codes you second period, and then a teacher codes you in seventh period. If you had changed your shirt in second period, why would you have be coded seventh period? And that's why, that's why I'm having, the logistics in my head are not adding up.
The issue was that many of the teachers have like different variations of their own interpretations of the actual dress code. So like, one teacher would see one point in the dress code and like, dress code a student in a certain way that was like to their own opinion. So I feel like we're, we're limiting the teachers to be able to dress code students strictly based on the guidelines rather than their own interpretations. So if like the teachers followed this dress code strictly, it won't allow interpretations because that's specific.
Yeah, if your shirt, if you, if you're, if I was wearing a shirt that needed to be changed, and I did it in second period, and I shouldn't have been coded later in the day, correct? So that's, that's something, so this is different, this is more of an interpretative component versus something that's plain.
Yeah.
In changing the code, it's pretty, I think when you look at the policy, it's pretty clear what the code is. So a teacher, if a teacher had a problem and it goes against what's in the policy, then it, clearly what would happen, I would be, I would hope that the principal and the vice principal would follow our policy, because that's what we're supposed to do. That's why we have policy. So I think that that probably would be addressed, and I agree with you, Debbie. I was thinking along the same line, if you got, if you were coded in second period and you changed your shirt, then how did you get to sixth period and have to be coded again? So that, that would be what I would think was, so. Did you have something that you needed to share, Ray or Kate? You both had your hands up.
I just wanted to say, I worked in a high school for a very long time, dress code, and we all went to high school, right? I remember I wore a band T-shirt that nobody liked, you know, and had to, had to change it. So this is an end-all, like it's evolving. And I think as a board, we really appreciate you for being here, and thank you for sharing your ideas. I personally do not like the dress code before second period thing for multiple reasons. One being, high school students, all students are savvy and can change again, you know, at lunch or in between classes, so there's that. But I have heard administrators for years say, "That child wore that outfit first, second, third, fourth, and fifth period, and sixth period, finally someone realized they shouldn't have been wearing that," you know? And so, yes, that is the problem. And that brings in 100 million reasons why. Because the first period class teacher was doing a new presentation, and the second period class teacher was being observed, and the third period, and so they were focused on other things, you know, or whatever and whatever. Or it's not always just that it doesn't offend them, you know? It's that they have a very, very, very big job, as all of us know, and that not everyone's focused on that. Some people focus on that when the students walk, first thing in their classroom. Some people focus on that when kids walk through the door in the morning, you know? So I'm just really grateful that we have good, concise, solid guidelines to follow that fit our times, you know? One of the examples that I love is, you can't buy a pair of jeans today without at least a little rip in it. Why? Because that's the style right now. You spend over $100 on a pair of jeans with a rip. My grandmother goes nuts over that, but it's true. And in our policy, it said, "No jeans with rips." Why? I don't know. You know, so it's nice to update, it's nice to change. I personally would be against this second period thing, but I understand why it is a problem. And I think just evolving and changing the policy to be new will hopefully weed out those problems. Just thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Should we continue to stop this?
Yeah. Thank you.
Yep. That's what policy is about. It changes, it evolves, that's what it's supposed to be.
Yeah.
And it's a collaboration with a lot of different...
I give you ladies a lot of credit. I would have, I would not be up there if I was the last student on the planet back in 19...
And, and Mrs. O'Brien, these, two of these women are seniors, they just graduated. So they're not even doing those for themselves. They're doing it for the next class that's coming. I'm not sure if the other girl is a senior too.
No, no. I'm a junior.
You can, you can just get back, if you have anything else, you can just reach out to Dr. Anmo, and you can reach out to Mrs. Francisco. She'll be glad to add anything to our committees that need to be, and we'll bring it up in the discussion. We're glad you came forward, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is anyone else... Yeah.
Close public comments?
Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We need an, we need executive session for this one motion to come back out to the... And then you're going to do another executive session after that, correct? Okay. All right. So I need a motion for executive session at 8:24 PM. I make a motion to go into executive session with the purpose of discussing personnel. And we'll come back out at the end. Approximately 15 minutes, does that sound right? Second.
Hi.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We will return. That's a pause. I'd like to call the meeting back to order. Mrs. Francisco, could you take roll call, please?
Mrs. Romeo?
Here.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes, I'm here.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Here.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Here.
Mr. Guarino?
Here.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Here.
Mr. Conklin?
Here.
Mrs. Vindley?
Here.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes. I would like to rule number 22.
Second. Any discussion? If not, roll call, please.